Welcome to the March 26, 2018, meeting of the Marquette City Commission. I would like to call this meeting to order. Would you please rise with me and say the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, could you please give us the roll call?
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Frazier?
Here.
Commissioner Plard?
Here.
Commissioner Reynolds? Commissioner Schlegel? Commissioner Smith? Mayor Protam Stonehouse?
Here.
Mayor Campana?
Here.
We have three Commissioners who are not here tonight. Could I have a motion? Commissioner Plard?
Your Honor, I move that we excuse Commissioner Schlegel and Commissioner Smith for being out of town, and we excuse Commissioner Reynolds for illness.
Is there a second? Commissioner Stonehouse? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? That carries four zero. We have the agenda in front of us. Would someone care to make a motion? Commissioner Frazier?
I make a motion to approve the agenda as written.
Would there be a second? Commissioner Plard?
I second.
All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Carries four zero. We come to announcements. We have boards and committees that advise the city. I see tonight that there are 22 openings spread across 10 committees. So if anybody out there has an urge or would like to volunteer to sit on a committee and help the city make decisions, this would be your opportunity. We have many different openings. It's a chance to do some good for the community and feel like you're giving some help to help make the city a better place. Feel free to contact any of the Commissioners or City Manager's Office, or go online. But we would like to have some volunteers if you have some time. Tonight, I see that we have some Boy Scouts from Boy Scout Troop 309, which I believe is based out of the Messiah Lutheran. Proud to have them here tonight. They're here to observe. Scouting is a good experience for men and women, or young men, young women. They tend to go on to become our leaders and doers of our communities. Proud to say that my son was a member of Troop 309, and I helped him with his Eagle Scout project. So 309, we're glad you're here. Okay, we come to boards and committees. Tonight, we have four appointments. They are Eric Brooks to the Planning Commission for an unexpired term ending 2/15/2019; Carolyn McDonald to the Board of Review for an unexpired term ending 2/1 of 2021; Michael Tricky to the Parks and Rec Advisory Board for an unexpired term ending 1/29/2021; and David Reom to the Local Development Finance Authority for an unexpired term ending 8/1 of '21. Do we have a motion? Commissioner Plard?
I move that we appoint Eric Brooks, Planning Commission, for an unexpired term ending 2/15/2019; Carolyn McDonald, Board of Review, for an unexpired term ending 2/1/2021; Michael Tricky, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, for an unexpected term ending 1/29/2021; and David Reom, Local Development Finance Authority, for an unexpired term ending 8/1/2021.
Would there be a second? Commissioner Frazier?
Second.
See no discussion? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? That carries four zero. Next, we come to the first of two public comments tonight. Public comment is a time when you can reserve to speak on an upcoming agenda item tonight, or you can just, if you have something to discuss with the Commission, this would be your time. We give you three minutes. We would like you to speak at the front podium. Give us your name and local address. I'm going to open public comment. Does anybody wish to address us at this time?
Good evening. Margaret Brum, 404 East Magnetic Street, Marquette, Michigan. And I'm here to talk about sewers, because you can't get enough of that. Recently, the city of Marquette sent people in the block of Magnetic Street I happen to live on a letter offering a service to come to the house and look at the sewers. And my mother and I talked about it, and we decided it'd be a good idea for them to come. And I'm about to surprise everyone on the panel when I say it was a fantastic experience, and it was very positive for us to have these gentlemen come. I have photos to leave with Mr. Angeli, so he can identify these people, who, I hate to call them the sewer guys, but you will know who they are, and they're just nice guys. First of all, we made an appointment, and they came on time. Second of all, they walked into the house as professionals do, and with all due respect for everyone, they didn't smell like a sewer. And I apologize if that's too blunt, but they came into a person's house, and they had little booties on their feet, so that they, whatever they had walked in, they didn't bring it into your house. Second of all, when they came in, my 90-year-old mother insisted on giving them the entire history of the house, which she had lived in for over 60 years. Every pipe, every sink, every toilet. And they were professional enough and personable enough to listen to her. And this made a great deal of impact upon her and upon me as well, because by the time we went down to the basement, they knew what they were looking for. Third of all, I'm a chemical engineer by training, and I was impressed with the type of equipment they brought with them. They have a camera, they run through the line, and they can show you your entire sewer, the inside, the piping, everything involved in it. And it is quite impressive, because in the basement of the house at 404, I never expected to see a computer run to a cable to run through the sewer line. And fourth of all, they went out on the street, and they painted an arrow, so when the sewer people come in and replace pipe, they can, they can do it easily enough. And fifth of all, they weren't in the house half an hour. They came on time, they listened to my mother, which easily took up half of their time. Then they went downstairs and did what they were supposed to do, and explained very carefully. And then they let me take pictures of them. The video I posted online of the inside of our sewer pipe has been viewed over 1,600 times. I'm saying this to you to recommend, if you get a letter from the city saying, "Well, come and look at the inside of your sewer pipe," call them up and have them come to your house. It's worth it. And with your permission, I'd like to approach Mr. Angeli and give him these photos, so he can, I hope, properly reward these gentlemen, who deserve kudos. Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else?
My name is Brad Van Sliders, 156 Timber Lane. This subject is a little more sober. The reason I'm here is because of him. That's my nine-year-old grandson. The subject I want to talk to you about is school safety. I want to ask all of you to think about the three most important things in your life. If I ask you to write them down right now, I'll bet you one of those three would be family. In light of that, I've had conversations with numerous people in this area, including the Superintendent of Schools and Principals. None of them feel safe. So, in light of that, that the first, one of the three most important things in your life is your family, our job is to make sure our families are safe. And I'm really pleased to see all these law enforcement guys here. It's really a great idea. So I have some questions. I'm not saying we're not doing it, but I want to stimulate some thinking. I've come out of retirement to do this, okay? Has this board held a review meeting with the Superintendent of Schools, Principals, and Law Enforcement? A coordinated meeting to review the schools? A, review what each school has and the safety elements in each school? B, to itemize by school what they need? I know what they need. I've spoken to some of them. Has this board made a request to meet with other Commissions, Commission Boards, zoning Commissions, to identify school safety programs? Has this board made a formal effort to reach out to our elected officials to coordinate efforts locally, state, and federal? Is anyone attending the Sarah Cambenzi meeting coming up? The town meeting? Is there a special committee working with citizen groups to identify the needs of the community? Are efforts being directed toward any emergency bond or millage to finance the needs of the school? Because there are needs in these schools. I know for a fact, we don't have cameras, buzzer systems, tinted windows, or officers other than in the high school, which is coordinatedly paid for by the Cohodas Fund, if I'm not mistaken. How is the special state funding being delegated? There's $100 million, $100 million being allocated to school safety. Who's on it? How much are we getting? Where is it going to be dispersed? The inner cities are not having this problem, because in the 80s and 90s, they dealt with drugs and gangs. They have metal detectors. They have police officers. They have buzzer systems. We're ripe for this. And the reason I say we're ripe for this is, as sure as that camera's running back there, we have had numerous instances where they've written on the walls in schools, "It's not if, it's when. It's coming." And so I'm trying to do, is I'm trying to coordinate an effort with you, with all of you, to think about this seriously. How much do we want to have this be like, "Oh, my gosh, it happened." We can prevent it. So let's make that happen as a group here, okay? And I'm going to leave you, if I can leave you with one picture that I'd like to approach the board, to leave you with a picture?
Bring it to the City Clerk, if you would.
It's a simple picture. It says, "Am I next?" That's a girl. Put a cross here. It's on her head. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Hello. I'm Stephen Slavensky, new resident to Marquette, 840 Preserve Drive. And I've come to talk a little bit about the fluoride issue. I would support the issue to remove fluoride from the water supplies in the city of Marquette. And I'm not sure how that process works, but I'd just like to quote a couple of quotes for your consideration. The first quote is from Dr. Arvid Carlsson, Nobel Prize winner in medicine from Sweden. Fluoridation goes against all principles of pharmacology. It's obsolete. He also made this statement. Sweden rejected fluoridation in the 1970s. Our children have not suffered greater tooth decay, as the World Health Organization attests. And in turn, our citizens have not borne the other hazards of fluoride can cause. And the third quote I have is from Dr. Dean Burke, former chief chemist, National Cancer Institute. In point of fact, fluoride causes more human cancer deaths than any other chemical. And this is important to public, this is my comment, this is important to public policy people, and also to government authorities. There are a great many people who don't tell the truth when they're in power and in administrative positions. Now, we saw that in the Flint Water Crisis. Really, the state of Michigan Health Department should be leading this move to remove a toxic substance from our water supplies. I'm also aware that the status quo, the medical establishment, dental associations, they'll go on and on and on about how great this is. But you have to understand, in Europe, 90%, 97% of the people are not fluoridated. And I've seen graphs over a long period of times, that they have, just, they do not have any more incidence of tooth decay. Now, there are doctors that say this can be a carcinogen. This can, fluoride can cause other medical conditions. And there are studies, but the studies are primarily done outside of the United States, because the status quo in America will support to the death fluoridation, fluorid, adding fluoride to water. So I'm one resident of Marquette asking you, if you're not up to speed on this, to look at some of the naysayers against fluoride and consider this in your future policy efforts.
Thank you.
Hello. Matt Luttenberger, 1406 Garfield Ave., here in Marquette. I come before you because, I guess, a couple of things. First, get the administrative parts out of the way. I don't know when the next meeting is. According to the online website that we upgraded, the agendas are only put up, or the meeting dates are only put up when we have an agenda ready, which is usually the Thursday before the meeting. So, no offense, but I've only had three days, apparently, to read the online agenda. But I don't, I don't come here for that. I come here because I remember back in 2014, October of 2014, I presented an idea to the Marquette General Hospital Board, when they were having the community meeting, about what to do next with the Marquette Board. Excuse me, Mr. Stonehouse, are you texting?
No, I am not texting.
Okay. But I'm sorry, are you distracted? Am I distracting you? Anyways, I'm trying to point out that you were in that room, Mr. Stonehouse, when you said that you wished the new hospital would not eliminate the tax base from the old hospital. And I agree. So for the last couple of months, actually years, for the last couple of months, I've been intensely organizing a campaign to find a reuse, or find the funds necessary for reuse of the hospital. And in light of that, the power plant as well, eventually. I've come to about a third of what I need. At the same time, a lot of it comes down to the name. I presented to you a few weeks ago called MARS University, something I wish to use rockets and model rockets and drones and other high-tech elements. I come to you today because I think a name change, because this town doesn't really have enough space for two universities. I want to call it the MARS Center. And MARS stands for Marquette Area Regional Science. We have a lot of groups who are traveling across the state and downstate for competitions. Notice that there's a local group that needs $20,000 for funds to go compete in a nationwide effort. In that sense, I would rather have them come here. I mean, that will be honest. I would rather have the $20,000 admission fee for groups to come to us. At the same time, it takes a long time. So I'm just here to say that there is an effort. Please stop trying to say that there is no effort, or we don't know what could happen to the power plant or the hospital. There is somebody in town. My name's Matt. You guys have my address and contact. And I would like to fund a science center for this whole UP region. I've used it as a Kickstarter for a bunch of other campaigns and ideas, but I think, for one, places like NMU and the Neuro Trainer could both have, not necessarily rent-free, but reduce, significantly reduced rent. Thank you for your time, and please keep up the good work.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Frank Jeff Verito, 350 East Ridge, Marquette. These are my opinions. February 26, someone asked to reserve time on the consent item. Until recent years, consent items needed to be mentioned during general comment time. I believe that during this chair's regime, a few others were previously allowed to speak to the consent agenda, which is an improvement over days past, because items have appeared on consent agendas that belong under regular business. In reviewing the work session on recycling and our regular meetings, I found no honest explanation of why neither commission nor public were aware that we went years believing our glass was recycled. Several board members showed great concerns, but failed to push for a clearer response. Is it true that fiber is not consistently recycled? Multiple sources over the years, including at least one person in the know, told me that some is and some isn't, depending upon whether it's profitable to run a truck. Because cardboard volume far exceeds that of glass, we deserve to know if we've been similarly betrayed on fibers. You're thanked for your concern, but you don't adequately push for explanations. Thanks also for your interest in our Dark Sky Initiative. So long as it's budget time, let's consider downcast streetscape lighting along Lake Shore Boulevard to improve the aesthetics and to eliminate the unnecessary light pollution along McCarty's Cove. All other utilities ought to run underground along there. Several candidates for the open commission seat listed the restoration and protection of our lake shore as one of our main priorities. They recognized which attribute makes Marquette the most special, aside from our people. The manager mentioned trying to shift capital improvement funds to Pitnik Rocks and Lighthouse Park from a project we don't need anymore. Which project and how much money? Please ask him. What's lacking is the degree of concern that ought to emanate from this board to restore and protect what the majority of us hold dear. We've seen light agendas for two months now, with no items pertaining to the statuses of erosion control or the transferal of Lake Lighthouse Park to its rightful owners. This after eight years of procrastination. It's easy and inexpensive to remove the unneeded fence at the property's northwest corner, and to reroute the bike trail, even if we use gravel for now. Please ask the manager to tell us what the schedule is for completing the project's two easiest elements, so to open at least the west half of Lighthouse Park this spring. To fully appreciate what we have, we need to travel every year or two. As the distance increases, the priceless value of Marquette overwhelms us, especially our natural attributes, even our drinking water, regardless of fluoride and chlorine. No matter how many trips I've taken and where I've gone, the best part is returning home to Marquette. That is, except for this time, when I returned from the desert to no running water, to no fault of the city.
Anyone else wish to address the Commission? Anyone else? Seeing none, we're going to close public comment. We're going to move to presentations. Tonight, we have two presentations. The first presentation will be given by Police Chief Blake Ribol, and it's about some lifesaving efforts on some of our citizens.
Thank you, Your Honor. If I could take a moment to ask the individuals that were involved to come up here with me, please? The officers, dispatchers? Gina Michelle? And Mr. Riddela? You guys can come on and tuck in here. I'm honored to be here tonight, along with Sergeant Jackie Sweeney. Jackie, please? Who nominated the individual standing behind me for a lifesaving award. The incident occurred in early March. I'm here to recognize and read the recommendation. First, I want to thank everybody for being here tonight. I know it's a long distance to travel here for this, but I appreciate everybody taking the time out of their day to be here. This was the nomination letter prepared by Sergeant Jackie Sweeney. On Friday, March 2, officers from the Marquette Police Department, NMU Public Safety, and dispatchers from Marquette County Central Dispatch were involved in a lifesaving incident. At approximately 9:50 PM, Central Dispatch received a 911 call of a subject in cardiac arrest on the side of the road. The female caller, Michelle Gransinger, was having difficulties giving the location and the information about the patient. Operator John Debold from Marquette County Central Dispatch was able to get them to pull over to the side of the road and put their hazard lights on, then assisted them in the CPR process. Cheryl Grove was able to put the incident out over Central Dispatch. The location was giving, given out as being on Wright Street and Marquette Township, near Commerce Drive. There were no officers in the immediate area at the time, but despite the call being dispatched to Marquette Township, Officers Swanson, Weaver, Stampy, and Officers Tackla and Britton from Marquette PD and NMU Public Safety responded to the scene. Officers located the vehicle on the side of the road off of Wright Street, near Ontario. CPR was being performed by Jean Gransinger and a person who was passing by that stopped to assist. They all arrived at the same time. Officers Jason Swanson and Ben Tackla immediately took over CPR, while Officer Stampy retrieved the AED. Officer Swanson and the Good Samaritan that was initially doing CPR hooked up the AED. A shock was advised, and Officer Swanson applied the shock. Officer Tackla then began compressions again, but stopped once the subject started breathing. EMS arrived a short time later, and by the time EMS had the individual loaded up and on his way to the hospital, he was talking and conscious. Officers followed up after the incident and found the only thing Mr. Riddela was suffering from was some sore ribs. Mr. Stephen Paul Riddel is here today with us, along with Jean and Michelle Gransinger. The Good Samaritan that left the scene was unable to be identified. If there is any information out there about the individual that stopped, I would appreciate that they contact the Marquette Police Department, so he could be given his due reward. The emergency responders involved, and as I call your name, the mayor has a certificate for you, and then I have a lifesaving PIN for the professionals involved. Mrs. Michelle Gransinger? Operator John Debold, Marquette County Central Dispatch? I'm also presenting the public safety professionals with a lifesaving PIN that they can display on their uniforms. Operator Andrew Van Nosterhout, Marquette County Central Dispatch? Operator Cheryl Grove, Marquette County Central Dispatch? It's always nice to see you. I just talked to you on the radio. Officer Jason Swanson, NMU Public Safety? Officer Jeff Stampy, NMU Public Safety? Officer Zane Weaver, NMU Public Safety? Officer Ben Tackla, Marquette City Police? And Officer James Britton, Marquette Police Department. And as Jackie concluded in her letter, I'm nominating the above individuals for a lifesaving award. I personally feel it was, if it was not for their actions, of Michelle and Jean Gransinger and the officers and dispatchers involved, Mr. Riddela would not be with us today. Thank you. Thank you for being here. Jean? Thank you for having me. Thank you. I really appreciate it. I know it's a little bit of a hike for you. Thank you.
Okay. We come to our second presentation of the evening. It's a Johnson Controls Update. We have Ron Steimak here. Ron, if you'll take the podium over there.
Well, good evening. I'd like to introduce Mike Connerparte here. Her name is Sarah Paris, and she's the lead project supervisor for the Sustainability and Energy Conservation Project that the city is undertaking right now. And so it's my job to give you an update on what, how we're doing and what's going on, and be glad to answer any questions that you guys might have. For, especially for the one council member I haven't met, this project really started about, almost a year ago now, where it's really about sustainability and the city trying to identify ways to save money to do capital improvements throughout the city. And so we're excited about the project. The city's excited about the project. It's going very, very well right now. And so I'm here to give an update, to talk about it a little bit, and... And so I'm here to give an update, to talk about it a little bit, and then also ask and answer any questions. So today's agenda, what have we completed so far to date on this project? This project is a $27.8 million project that the city is taking on. It's going to save the city a significant amount of money over the next 20 years and address a lot of capital needs that the city hasn't had the money to do in the past, that is allowing us to get the city to a more proactive approach to managing and maintaining the capital assets of the city and of the taxpayers here in Marquette. And so I'm going to talk about those desired outcomes, the construction projects completed to date, and what should the administration, the commission, and the citizens in the city expect to see over the next 90 days as we continue to install this project? So completed to date, you know, there's been a lot. This thing's been going on since last August or so, the installation part of this project. And so we've completed, at City Hall specifically, we've completed the boilers. That was done last fall before the heating season of updating the heating equipment here. New air conditioning equipment that's onsite and that is being installed right now. The chiller is here, but we have to wait to commission it until we actually get some warm weather. So hopefully this nice weather that we've had these last couple of days continues and that snow for this weekend goes away. So we'll see. Lighting in this building, there's a lot of work that's been going on here, including renovation of the first floor. But the lighting upgrade here at this building is about 50% complete. Some of that's following the renovation that's taking place, which is really into three different phases. Phase one will be completed here. You see a lot of construction and temporary walls put up around the first floor of City Hall here. And so this project is all being funded by the savings that are being generated in the projects. There's no additional capital outlay on behalf of the city that's necessary to do these improvement measures or taxpayer dollars. And so the HVAC upgrades, which are in addition to the boilers and the chiller, and here are about 50% complete. And then the renovation, phase one will be completed here at the end of April, on April 30th, and then phase two and three will begin in May, with the overall completion of City Hall expected to be done by August. And so there'll be a lot of work that's going on. The major construction portion of this project will be taking place over the next 90 days, which you'll see here in a moment. Yeah, that's a good point. On Lakeview Arena, we've updated a completely new fire alarm system. That system is complete now at Lakeview. The lighting upgrade's 50%. We had to wait until the ice was off before we could do anything over the ice, along with replacing all of the ice-making equipment. The demolition of that ice-making equipment is taking place right now, and will be installed this summer, and it'll be ready for the new hockey season and skating season come the fall. And that'll be complete by, should be by the end of August at the latest. Right now, the HVAC upgrades, there's additional things that are going on there to improve air quality, for instance, in some of the locker rooms and those type of things at Lakeview. Those are about 25% complete, and a lot of those things can't happen during the winter because you need those systems to be on in order to provide heat and fresh air to the building. So that's why those things are going to be, most of that stuff will be done here this summer. And you'll see that as sort of a common theme throughout each one of the buildings as we go through what's done to date. The water treatment plant with the lighting upgrade that we've done there for energy-efficient LED lighting is complete. The HVAC upgrades are about 70%. New boilers were installed last fall and are complete. What's that? And that's, yeah, that's a picture of the new boiler is at the water treatment plant. Thank you, Sarah. And so, you know, there's a lot, there's a lot been going on. At the wastewater treatment plant, the lighting upgrade's complete there as well. This is also part of the sustainability effort for the city at the plant itself of using methane to generate electricity. And so it's a really cool project. A lot of the stuff that could happen inside the building in regards to the piping that's necessary for that system has been completed and is in place. The next step will be to start pouring pads here as soon as we get rid of the snow and start building the actual plant, which will be completed by the latest October, November timeframe. At Hurley and North Ballfields, there's a lot of unnecessary extra electrical meters that were at those two sites, and so those have been combined to make it more efficient and to save the city money. Traffic signals, that's a pretty big project in regards to new traffic signals around the city and some of the major intersections. Right now, four signals have been removed that were no longer necessary based off of traffic flow studies that were completed by the city. And so, but those traffic signals, you'll see that starting here about the July timeframe is when they'll be started. And so that'll be some changes that are taking place, not only for efficiency, but also traffic flow and things like that down Washington Street through the city. So that's, lights will be more coordinated to help continue flow of traffic and start to avoid congestion in the downtown areas. And so that's a pretty exciting smart city aspect of this project. Water conservation's been completed in multiple areas. That seems like upgrading urinals and sinks and those type of things to more efficient equipment. And so to conserve water, a lot of that's been completed already. And then the beginning of the AMI, which is the water meter reading system, and the water meters are placed throughout the city, has been started. We start with the large water meters that serve like Northern Michigan University and some of the larger commercial institutions around the city. Those are about 50% complete right now, and the residential meters will start within the next 30 to 60 days, and those will continue throughout the summer and into the fall as well, with the automatic meter reading system being available to give constituents real-time access to their usage inside their homes and help you to manage that better, to save you money as a consumer. And so we're excited about that and how that's going to apply and actually have a positive impact on taxpayers. So over the next 90 days, what's going to take place? City Hall, like we already talked about, renovation phase two actually and three. HVAC upgrades at the senior center and upgrading those systems that service that. Lighting, finishing that, we're at about 50% complete, but that here and at senior center as well. Finishing and completing the chiller install so that the air conditioning system for City Hall is completely ready to go once the cooling season gets here. Window replacement, that's a picture of an existing window. You can see that the windows here in City Hall are old and definitely are at the end of their useful life, and they have all kinds of issues with them. Those will be replaced here starting early summer in the June timeframe. We're upgrading information technology and fire alarm systems here at the City Hall, and that's really allowed to give, the IT upgrades are really going to help support things like security and safety for this specific site. And those last two bullet points are really tied together because you can't, the security systems are all part of the IT system and vice versa, and so those intertwine. But we're looking at cameras and card access and some of those type of things to make sure that City Hall is a safer place for community constituency and the staff that has to work here every day and coordinating it with the police department. At Lakeview, a lot of work on the ice-making equipment. That is a huge retrofit. You can see the picture on the right there. That's just a piece of all the piping and infrastructure that are part of the equipment that makes the ice over at Lakeview for about eight months of the year. And so that'll be completely replaced, and we're starting the demolition of all of that now, and so that's already begun. And then the equipment will be installed this summer and hopefully completed, well, will be completed before the hockey season for sure. The new ice rink lighting to help improve, you know, and take away shadows on the ice on both rinks, as well as making it very efficient using LED technology. Building envelopes, things like weather stripping and ceiling doors and windows and all those type of things to allow the HVAC system that's designed for that building to work the way it's supposed to. And these are things that you can really utilize as constituents in the local area, but things you should be doing in your own homes to help save your money on your electric bills and natural gas bills. And so these are all different ideas that the city's implementing on a very large commercial basis, but these are also things that you can take back to your home too and apply to help make your overall utility bills less, which we know are sometimes painful here in the UP. I live in Hancock, I definitely understand. Wastewater treatment plant, finishing the HVAC upgrades, and then there's a lot of work going on with that cogeneration plant and some of the actual systems that help process the wastewater that comes into the building, an FEW system and some other systems that are being upgraded there. Those will all be completed this summer when loads are less and we can plan it so that it has zero impact on the local constituency and the services that that plant provides. At the water treatment plant, there's high and low service pumps that provide water and provide water to all of the houses and commercial institutions and all those type of things in the city. Those all need to be, those are all at the end of their useful life, and those will be updated and upgraded as well. They will be done in sequence so that water supply to the city will never be affected. But those will start here, actually as early as May, correct?
The process has already started with the first set of pumps.
All right. And so that would be looked to be completed this summer as well, along with some additional HVAC upgrades at the water treatment plant, things like air handling units and some things like that. They're still in the process. Lighting, there's multiple city locations. Those are the buildings themselves that we're looking at, you know, restrooms and park buildings and those type of things. Some of the major buildings have already been started, and so those are smaller locations. And then some of the big items that are now, the designs are completed, engineering's completed, and those will be done here this summer, are things like citywide street lighting going to LED to help dark sky events and those type of things. So all those things are part of the design and engineering that went into the completion of that improvement measure specifically. Replacement of traffic signals. We talked about that briefly. That's what that picture is on the bottom right there. It's an existing traffic signal. About changing out those, not only making them more efficient, but more importantly, helping traffic flow throughout the city. As well as, and then the biggest one here is the AMI water meter upgrades. Those have already begun, and those will be looking to be done here probably within the next six months is our target right now, to have those done by November. But that's more or less replacing and upgrading any meters that were dated or at the end of their useful life throughout the city. There are some meters that were already in the city that were already new that we're going to be tying into the AMI system that we're not replacing just to replace. And so if you are contacted, you can expect that here sometime soon in order to plan those water meter upgrades, there's as little disruption to the community as possible. All right? I believe that is it. So I'll open up the floor if there's any questions. You know, Mayor, I'll leave it up to you.
Commissioner Frazier.
You're planning to turn the air conditioning on like around 4/7 at Mike's office, then? Have a big celebration with the fireworks for turning on the air conditioning? I think July might be a good timeframe, maybe for AC, probably.
You won't need it in June. You're probably right, Pete.
I think July might be a good time, maybe for, but seeing, I talked to, we were all down Lansing for conventions, a bunch of city meetings, talked to some company that supplied street lighting, and they had very similar lights that we have in town right now. They said they're LED and they have all kinds of, you know, they have HID, they have LED, they have everything. I said, well, get ahold of our local BLP or talked to Mike Angeli, and they said, oh, we've done work before in town, so it'd be great to, I said, get on the ball, because you guys are all already in charge of that stuff. So I think it's great you guys are doing something, because I notice I walk a lot at night and some of the streetlights don't even work anymore, so I think it's great.
Yeah, thank you, Pete. I mean, we're definitely looking at coordinating that and working very closely with the BLP on that effort to make sure that we're managing that to the most efficient way we can.
Commissioner Plard.
Thank you, Your Honor. Ron, Mary, I'm very impressed. I knew you guys were working, and we could see at City Hall different things that are happening, but I had no idea until I reviewed the material that you guys had gone this far already. So well done. Very impressed, and also very professional from what I'm hearing from everybody and how you're just moving along. From what I can see, everything you promised is happening, and that's huge. So, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate those comments.
Ron, I got to say, it's just an overwhelming project. I mean, the degree of infrastructure upgrades that you're doing is just, this is the amount that we, the city could never do this in this short period of time. We can never afford to bond for it. This program where we're paying for it with our savings, I hope that people realize it's not costing the city anything. It's just a tremendous way to do it and the results we're going to get. And the best thing, you got to realize, if it doesn't save us money, you guys are going to pay for it. Is that not right?
That's exactly right. You're right.
So I mean, we can't lose. We can't lose, so. And so the one question I do have, is everything going smoothly? You have any major setbacks? Everything is as you expected?
Right now, Sarah and her team are doing an absolutely outstanding job. I do want to give kudos to one specific member of your team. There's a lot of people at the city that on the administrative team that have been fantastic, but you have a leader right now that is really second to none. I've been doing this for 21 years, and Eric Steeman deserves that recognition. Yeah, I mean, he's working directly with Sarah every day on making sure that this project is seamless and holding us accountable. We're going to do that ourselves, but it sure is nice working with a customer that understands what's going on in the city infrastructure and is really assisting in making this thing happen. And so, and that's a key component of this thing. It's not just Johnson Controls in a Box. It's really a co-authored effort, and without both teams giving 100%, it's not going to be successful. So he does deserve that recognition, and, you know, and Eric, thank you for everything that you're doing.
Well, thank you. Mr. Steeman, thank you.
And thank you for coming and presenting, and we'll see you perhaps in a few months.
Yes, we'll definitely see you. Keep you, keep you abreast of what's going on.
Good. Thank you very much.
Next, we come to the consent agenda. We have it in front of us. Do I have a motion? Commissioner Stonehouse?
Mr. Mayor, I motion to approve the consent agenda as written.
Would there be a second? Commissioner Frazier?
Second.
See no discussion? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Passes? Four zero. Okay, we have two new business items this evening. The first concerns retiree health funding vehicle. City Clerk, would you please give us some background on that, please?
Thank you, sir, background. Many municipalities in the state are facing financial difficulties due to rising unfunded accrued liabilities for pension and other post-employment benefits, OPEB. At the city, OPEB liability refers to retiree health coverage. In a retiree healthcare plan, unfunded liability is the difference between the estimated cost of future benefits and the assets that have been set aside to pay for them. While the city has eliminated retiree health coverage and subsidies for new hires, we still have an obligation to pay OPEB benefits for current retirees and some active employees. In order to comply with recent legislation, Public Act 202 of 2017, which recommends addressing unfunded pension and retiree healthcare liabilities of local governments by pre-funding them, staff is recommending the establishment of a retiree health funding vehicle offered through the municipal employee's retirement system. The city is currently 0% funded for OPEB because we have always funded these benefits on a pay-as-you-go basis. By establishing RHFB, we are setting up a Section 115 government trust. Assets held in the trust are legally protected from creditors and may only be used for OPEB expenses. The MERS retiree health funding vehicle helps employers set aside assets for funding their OPEB liability while benefiting from investing in MERS investment options. Some advantage of the RHFB are, we determine the contribution frequency and amount to the trust. The trust has been approved by a private letter ruling from the IRS. We benefit from the strength of MERS large membership with cost-effective diversified portfolios. Earning on assets will reduce our long-term contributions and unfunded liability. Funding may prevent our net OPEB obligation from becoming a significant liability on our balance sheet. Funding can contribute to a positive credit rating. Fiscal effect, the RHFB will initially be funded from unused monies budgeted for health coverage at the end of each fiscal year. Recommendation, approve the attached resolution establishing MERS retirement health funding vehicle for OPEB liabilities and authorize the chief financial officer to sign the authorization documents. Alternatives, as determined by the commission.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have a motion? Commissioner Plard.
Your Honor, I move that we approve the attached resolution establishing a MERS retirement health funding vehicle for OPEB liabilities and authorize the chief financial officer to sign the authorization documents.
Is there a second? Commissioner Frazier?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Commissioner Plard.
Thank you, Your Honor. I want to put a shout out and thanks to Gary Simpson, who is the chief financial officer. And Gary is always looking at these, and between him and our city manager, Mike Angeli, came up with the program, and I appreciate that. Well done, Gary. It's something that we absolutely have to do. And as Commissioner Frazier mentioned, we were at the Michigan Municipal League Convention last week in Lansing, and we got kudos for the status that we're in with this. And again, Gary deserves a lot of credit because your name was mentioned many times, Gary. I want to let you know that publicly.
Thank you. Mr. Frazier, anything?
There are usually good things to say about you, Gary, not bad things usually. I mean, the retirement is, we have a lot of police, a lot of fire, the city's just a big employer, so I mean, take care of retirees that bust their butt for the city, it's a
I have a question. The short of this is that we just have to start putting money aside to fund retiree healthcare benefits. The question I have is, the money goes into the state fund. Is it separated, dedicated just for city of Marquette, or is it going to a big state sl-? to a big state slash fund, and you draw it out as you need it? Or is this money, the money we put in, is that the money we get out?
This is going into the Gary Goes to Hawaii Fund. First of all, before I answer the question, and thank you for the compliments, but I would be remiss if I didn't mention Susan Bohor as well. We have both worked in conjunction in putting this together for actually quite a few years now. Susan has worked diligently in getting language changed in the labor contracts to allow us to do this. So I want to thank Susan for doing that. And also, I want to thank all the employees that were involved in the union contracts to recognize this is a great need that the city needed to do. So this is something that's actually very new. In the past, we've always reported OPEB liabilities in the footnotes to our financial statements. And everybody was happy with that. And then, the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, GASB, required that we remove that from the footnotes, but put it on the face of the financial statements. So if you recall, there's been great gnashing of teeth, particularly from me and others like me throughout the entire country, because this actually makes the city look a lot worse. Even though we've been reporting these numbers for years, we now have to actually put them on the financial statements, which has a big impact on the, like, the credit rating of the city and those types of things. So, the state recently, but the GASB never required that these liabilities be funded, just that they be disclosed. And we always went on the pay-as-you-go method, so whatever the actuary is required, we needed to pay, we paid each year, and we put it into our budget. And it worked fine for cities like us. And then the state just recently enacted legislation that says these programs now have to be funded or pre-funded. And that's what Susan and I are recommending now, is this is a mechanism to pre-fund the liability. And it is with our current retirement system, MERS. And we could have chosen another third-party administrator, but we have a good record with MERS, and they have a good record of, you know, investment returns and that type of thing. And so this money will be kept completely separate, it is the city's money, and no matter what happens, it will remain the city's money, and nobody can touch it. So, that was a long way to answer your question, and I apologize, but I just kind of felt like, need to get a little bit of history to this.
You did make it clear, thank you. Okay, we have the motion, it's been seconded, we'll vote on it. All those in favor? And it's going to be a roll call vote, by the way. City Clerk, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Frazier?
Yes.
Commissioner Plard?
Yes.
Mayor Proctom Stonehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Campana?
Yes. Passes four zero. Okay, next we move to our second and last business item of the evening, and that's the senior center improvements. Again, City Clerk, could you give us the background to that, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Background: the senior center utilizes the Barica Gym for various programs and activities. The gym floor has sustained greater wear than anticipated this year, and there are additional lines needed for the pickleball courts utilized by the senior center. Staff obtained a quote to refinish the gym floor with the new court lines for $2,750 from U.P. Hardwood. The quote also includes a possible second quote of polyurethane at an additional cost of $750 if needed. Facility staff was able to purchase nearly new lockers from the YMCA of Marquette County at substantial savings over retail value. New lockers in the Barica Gym locker rooms will greatly improve senior center user experience. The cost of the lockers is $500 with the labor to install, covered by the Department of Public Works Facilities Division. The final improvement is to add railing to the entire length of the back hallway in the senior center. This addition will greatly improve the ease and safety of users navigating the center. The cost of the railing is $1,176.26 with the labor to install covered by the Department of Public Works Facilities Division. Funding for these improvements will be taken from the Senior Services Fund Reserve. The reserve has sufficient funds for the improvements. Fiscal effect: funds to be transferred from the Senior Services Fund Reserve in the fiscal year 2018 senior services allocation and local millage budget. The cost is estimated to be $4,676.26, but not to exceed $5,500. Recommendation: approve the senior center improvements and use of reserve not to exceed $5,500. Alternatives: as determined by the commission.
Commissioners, would someone like to make a motion? Commissioner Stonehouse?
Your Honor, I motion to approve the senior center improvements and the use of the reserve not to exceed $5,500.
Would there be a second? Commissioner Plard?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Commissioner Stonehouse?
Only that is good work to be done.
Commissioner Plard, anything?
Nothing.
See, no further comment? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Carries? Four zero. Next, we come to our last public comment of the evening. Again, it's a chance for citizens, residents, to address the commission. At the front podium, you got three minutes, we need your name and local address. I'm going to open public comment. Would anybody like to address the commission at this point?
Good evening, I'm Valerie Olson, 116 Hillcrest Trail. I'd like to address the issue of the fluoridation of our water once again. I am hopeful that all of you who received the emails I sent took the time to read them over. There was a lot of good information, important information, and I think it's important that we are informed about this issue. Again, I will say, there is no scientific basis for claiming that adding this industrial waste byproduct to our water supply is safe. There have been no long-term safety studies at all, not for children, infants, pregnant women, none of our vulnerable groups of people. We do know that this substance accumulates in the brain, in the bones, in the thyroid gland, for all people. Slowly, over time, it accumulates. I myself was fluoride toxic after having 25 years of drinking fluoridated water, and it took two full years for me to clear that from my body with the best testing that could be done, and working with a doctor who was knowledgeable about this. I think it's really, really critical that we understand that there is no benefit to ingesting fluoride over topical. In fact, even the CDC now will acknowledge that it's topical contact with the teeth that is beneficial. There's no reason to put this, and it is a medication, it is not a nutrient, it is not needed for any process in the human body at all. So, it is a medication, according to the FDA, it's been classified as a medication, as an unapproved drug. And there's no reason to do this, because topical contact with the teeth is even what the Center for Disease Control says is what is effective. My father was a dentist, he, when I learned all of this, I approached him and said, Dad, did you, did the ADA, the American Dental Association, not inform you as to the issues with ingesting? Oh, no, they told us it's safe, it's good for the teeth, and no one bothered to research the research, you know? They believe the organizations that are supposed to tell them what they should do and are supposed to know the truth, so they trust the experts. In this case, you know, we have been continuing this, we are the odd country out, with 97% of Europe having rejected this, because they know of its harmful effects on the body. So, the big problem is, it's accumulating in these organs and systems, and one example is the thyroid gland, which it did in my own body. And when we suppress thyroid function, which many doctors, including David Brownstein and Mark Hyman, have stated, if it suppresses thyroid function, it is weakening the immune system and allowing people to be more vulnerable to cancers, to heart disease, and on and on. This is big stuff, this is serious. So I ask you, please, I urge you, please go to fluoridealert.org, which was in the email I sent out. Please do some homework, learn about it, so that we can make a better informed decision. Thank you.
Frank Chef, 350 East Bridge Marquette, these are my opinions. Past advice was ignored to list on the agenda when students will be behind the dais. We deserve to know, so we can also address them. February 12th, the same process was used to replace Mr. Baldini that was used to replace Ms. Campenzi. Despite the light agenda, this board ignored previous advice to allow the candidates to speak for more than three minutes, and to discuss the candidates openly prior to voting. We know who voted for whom, but not why. The fact that all the candidates squeezed as much as they could in their three minutes is proof that more time was warranted. Two women spoke in favor of Ms. Brum, while no one recommended anyone else, although Mr. Ottoey had previously received the most recommendations. Not one word of this comment is directed against Mr. Schlegel. The fact is that from a public standpoint, he included the least amount of information on his application, and was only allowed to speak publicly for three minutes before his appointment. This might suggest he had an unfair advantage by being known to you behind the scenes. Your failure to discuss the candidates as advised prior to voting exacerbates the suspicion. Yes, his planning and BZA involvements are credible, and I agree with Mr. Plard that the choice from such a pool of qualified candidates had to be agonizing. How, though, did you choose the man who provided the least amount of information? In Mr. Schlegel's defense, he seemed to hit the ground running, and he may well have been our best choice, although he's already absent. How he received at least four votes on the first ballot remains a mystery. You're asked to discuss your selections during closing comment or add an agenda item next time. What's despicable is that the man in the wheelchair was only partially shown on TV. The technician in the back room must still be sound asleep. At two recent meetings, several women voiced their concern over the fluoridation of our water. March 12th, the chair responded only based on positive remarks he gathered about fluoride from dentists and his pharmaceutical knowledge, which is meaningful. Bothers him so, though, was the way he ignored what seemed like sound medical research on why fluoride is dangerous. You're aware that when I comment against something, my remarks almost always take the opposing viewpoint into consideration. The chair was asked to account for that research, instead of using the familiar commission tactic of only telling the public what it wants us to hear. More compelling research was cited tonight. Mr. Plard, who said he'd researched this topic, is asked to reveal what he's learned to date, as is those residents wasted their time by showing up. Finally, Mr. Frazier thanked our new members for being here, because our meetings are now shorter. In truth, they're shorter because there's nothing on the agenda. If Mr. Frazier doesn't like how long our meetings run, he's not forced to be here. In the meantime, he's asked to please try his best to speak more
Margaret Brum, 404 East Magnetic, Marquette, Michigan. And I'm here tonight to talk about two Freedom of Information Action requests I have pending in front of the city. I received word today from the clerk's office that I should receive the documents requested this week, and I appreciate and recommend them for their response to the Freedom of Information Act requests. They guided me through the process, and were very helpful in making sure that what I asked for, I got, and I look forward to reviewing the documents. I don't believe in ambushing anyone, and I don't believe in coming at people sideways and saying, well, you should have done this, or you should have done that. The reason for my Freedom of Office information request is simple. I want to look at the numbers, I want to see the numbers of the budget, and the invoices that are received, and the invoices that are paid. I also want to, and I've requested of city manager Angeli, certain of his emails discussing very specific events that I've heard discussed here. It isn't because I expect to find magical information in Mr. Angeli's emails. If they're anything like my emails were when I worked, he can't imagine why anyone would be interested in looking at them. The reason I'm interested in looking at them is if it's not coming through him, it's not being done. He's the city manager. So what I'm looking for in his emails is what is being discussed with him on certain matters, and what is not being discussed. Because if it's not being discussed with him, nothing's happening. What I'm looking for in the invoices, I'm not a trained accountant, I'm not a trained financial person, I have great admiration for people who can look at numbers. But I have been in charge of a budget, a multimillion-dollar international budget with different numbers coming at me. And many, many, many times, in the 15 years I was responsible for that budget, I had to come up with money, one way or another, to get something done that people didn't know about. It's normal, it's routine, it's really hard work, but if you get the original information, you can figure it out. My goal with these Freedom of Information Act requests is to make recommendations and observations where the money can be found to fix Picnic Rocks. I'm not going to, I'm not going to repeat what Picnic Rocks means to this community, I'm simply going to say that when Picnic Rocks was destroyed in the storm back in October, my mother spoke of dating my father at Picnic Rocks, of going there for the beach and the picnics, and what it really meant to her. And she doesn't talk like that. So what you've got is a daughter trying to figure some way out to get Picnic Rocks fixed, so she can take her mother there. My mother's 90 years old, she can't walk that far. So I'm coming for your information, and I'm coming for your emails, I'm doing so honestly. I've signed my name to the discussions. When I find what I find, I will share it with you privately first, and then we'll see what we can do with this to find some money to fix Picnic Rocks. Thank you very much for your time.
Is there anyone else? Anyone else? Okay, see, and then we're going to close public comment. We're going to move to comments from the commission. We'll start with Commissioner Frazier.
Public safety, school safety is important to all of us. I mean, we don't have to talk to anybody else, but it's very important. Luckily, Marquette has not been involved in anything yet, but never know. We're very confident, we're a police force to be in contact with everybody, and there were some problems before about the police being in trouble for parking in a bad spot, and the people were aware of it. I think, well, geez, I wouldn't complain about a police officer at my daughter's school, even if he parked in a bad spot, I wouldn't complain, because that's good. If a police officer at the school means there's protection there. You know, I'd see it, that's a good thing. But, I mean, public safety, Sarah Campenzi, Representative Sarah Campenzi is aware of all the school safety, she worked for the schools for many years, she's aware of it, and she's doing her best and last to help out. And, I mean, as far as Picnic Rocks, that area got destroyed in the fall, late fall, and there's nothing we could do about it. We are in the process of trying to find some money, some grant money to do it. Mike's worked very hard with our staff, trying to break, and we've worked on the whole winter about re-engineering the area. When we were in Lansing, like, we all stated before, I met with some people that are in charge of erosion control, very, very good people. The company I work for sells a lot of products for erosion control, but nothing like they had. They had all kinds of stuff for erosion control. I said, that's great, your erosion control, because we have a lot of erosion at Picnic Rocks, we also have a lot of erosion at Prescott. So we have a lot of areas that need help. And I've told them, get ahold of Mike Angeli, and I've got some brochures I'm going to give him, he'll pass them on to the Parks Board, and they're all about it, trying to do whatever we can to help out, you know, so, I appreciate everything.
Thank you. Commissioner Plard?
Thank you, Your Honor. Mr. Verito, it's nice to see you. We haven't seen you in a while, and we're becoming maybe a little concerned, but you look tanned and healthy, and it's good to see you. Directly to your question, it's a mistake to believe that we voted for a new commissioner based on the three minutes that we saw in public. Speaking for myself, I spent all week researching as much as I could about every candidate. And I meant what I said when I said, we had some fabulous candidates. It really was difficult to make that decision, and that's why I put so much time in it. This is my third year on the commission now, and I've come to know my fellow commissioners not speaking for them, but I've come to know them well enough to know that they do the same amount of research. So when we came to that city commission meeting, we were armed and ready. We knew what we were looking at. I was curious to hear what the candidates had to say, but hardly was the three minutes that they were up on public comment the basis for my vote, anyway, personally. Beyond that, yes, all the help we can get to help fund the repairs for Picnic Rocks, fantastic, something that has to be done. Everybody in the city loves Shyrus Park and Picnic Rocks and wants that done. Also, I want to mention that I had said in the last meeting that I am re-looking at fluoridation, I am continuing to do that. It's going to take time, and I want to see, I have to be honest with you, what I've heard at this point right now is just your side. And I'm not discounting that, don't get me wrong, but I want to hear all sides. Normally, in a situation like this, what I've found out is there's usually- As I said, I'm not discounting the information. Appreciate you bringing it up. To the scouts in the audience, I hope you saw a pretty good meeting. Unfortunately, we didn't have the full Commission here, but that's very rare that that happens. But, we're glad to have you, and thanks for being here. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Stonehouse?
Two quick things, if I can. What a pleasure tonight, and especially with the scouts here, to see some real American heroes honored. That was remarkable. And it was particularly remarkable, because they represented different police forces and different agencies that came together to get one job done. And they did it seamlessly, and they did it selfishly, and they did it because of what had to be done. And I think it's just terrific for us to see that. It's terrific to be able to honor them, and I commend Chief Blake for doing that. I certainly commend the officer for putting the package together, and the mayor for getting up and doing what he did with the certificates. So, certainly, I think that's a real plus for Marquette. Lastly, you know, sometimes in the spring, we look for the first red robin to arrive in the snow, and we know that the snow is finally going away. But when you live in a Great Lakes port, the first thing you look for is the first ship of the spring. And she made it in last night, and that was the K.E. Barker. And another one's doing, right behind her, the honorable Hoverstar. So, truly, spring has come to the upper Great Lakes. And once upon a time, we had no planes, trains, and automobiles. And as a history lesson, that first boat came, it brought everything we were waiting for all winter. So, it's very important to us all, but really a little piece of history. Your Honor?
Thank you. No, it was an honor tonight. It was a pleasure and an honor to bring these men and women, police officers, here tonight and honor them. They truly deserve it. They do this every day, and they just don't get the recognition that they should get. So, we should thank them. If they're not there, this community doesn't work. I have to, well, not apologize, but if you're wondering why we only have four Commissioners, in my five years being on the Commission, this is the first time we've only been down to four Commissioners. So, it's kind of, we're wondering, because you need four Commissioners for a quorum. If we only had three, we wouldn't be able to conduct a meeting tonight. So, not very often does this happen. This past week, four Commissioners, myself and three others, all of us here, and the City Manager, we went to Lansing for what's called the MML, it's a meeting of state, across the state, all the cities get together and try to learn something, be informed. It's an opportunity, we were able to talk to, we had meetings with our bond lawyers. These are the people that float the bonds, so the city can borrow money. Always important to see what's going on with them. We had opportunities, and we did meet with all three of our state representatives and the state senator, plus other representatives. And we also met different city Commissioners and different city managers, you know, from cities throughout the U.P., a chance to network, if you want to call it that, and find common, you know, talk about our common problems and what they're doing, and how they address it. So, it was a worthwhile experience. On the topic of fluoride, I still remain, I'm 100% committed to what we're doing with fluoride. I will say, for the people out there, our community water supply is carefully regulated. It's entirely 100% safe. Fluoride in water does prevent dental caries in young children, developing teeth. I talked to two dentists today, just happened to see them, and I talked to them, and they said to me, they do not know one dentist in the county that is against fluoridating the water. These are dentists. If they say that, I don't think they're blind to say it. They know what they're talking about, they see it on an everyday basis. So, again, fluoride, it's a safe additive, no matter what you hear, it's safe in our water, carefully regulated. It's a wise decision to keep it there. And, Mr. Verito, I think you owe an apology. You said that our tech was asleep at the wheel. To me, that was a very rude and uncalled-for insult. What he's doing is a very complex operation. I don't think you could even come half of what he's doing. So, you had no reason to say that he's asleep at the wheel. That was a very rude comment. You see him, you should apologize to him. I know you won't, because that's the type of person you are. Yeah, you're shaking your head. And on that high note, I'm going to give you the City Manager.
Thank you for that. To respond to the comment from the gentleman regarding the school safety, I myself have been involved in committees within the school district to deal with facilities, school safety. I know the Police Chief and his staff has been involved as well in those kind of discussions. I know there are plans in place, and it's not a topic that goes on or ignored. I also know that the Police Chief plans on probably himself attending, and maybe one other, with Representative Campenzi, when she meets in a public forum setting within the coming weeks. So, yes, we are participating in that endeavor. We have been participating, and if I had to guess, we've probably been ahead of the curve in many respects. And, Margaret, thank you for the accolades for our staff. It doesn't happen that often. I didn't know they wore booties, but it's nice to hear that they do, and I will...
I'm not exaggerating.
I know. I didn't think I was buying it for them, but, you know, it's good to hear. And I don't think I need to apologize for the lack of agenda items and the short agendas. I mean, we've been pretty busy for two years straight here, and it's going to get busy again, so my advice is to enjoy this quieter time. That's all I have.
We're adjourned.[1724.38]